Thank you. I'd like to call a meeting to order. That's who we call a roll, please.
I know that all board members are in attendance.
Okay, thank you. First item of business is approval of agenda. Need a motion to approve the agenda as presented in your board packet tonight.
I'll make that motion.
Rick, in a second, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Linda. And let's see, you've got to call a roll, please.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, we've got some action items coming out of closed session tonight. And I think we've got them... Oh, you wouldn't have those up there yet, would you? We've got, let's see, the first one is we want to amend and open the minutes of February 1st, 2013. And that was an emergency board meeting. And we had it listed first, and the board members were approved as a closed meeting. But we only had a majority of a quorum there, so we have to open it up as an open meeting. Then we also have our... To open up the January 10th, 2011, closed session minutes. And then approve the August 5th, 2013, and August 26th, 2013, closed minutes. But those will stay closed at this time. So I need a motion to approve those minutes as stated.
I made a motion with an amendment on January 10th, 2011, to redact the student information in that, in those minutes.
Okay. Okay, so that information will be redacted. Need a motion then with that, with that change, to approve those minutes as presented in your board packet tonight.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lisa. In a second, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Linda. And Betsy, call a roll, please.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Next is our budget hearing for FY '14 budget. So we'll open up the budget hearing process at this time. And Mr. Murphy's got some information for us. And just contain your board packet.
The middle link, the changes from August to September. You'll open that up. This is an Excel document to demonstrate the changes that I presented to you between the August budget that you received, and it was out for public review, and then what I've re-proposed tonight, which is actually the September budget, the differences of that come up.
Projectors not moving.
There we go. Top box on the left is for fund balances. And again, this is by the different funds. The only difference between the August report and the September report appear in the ed fund and then in the working cash for the overall fund balances. Reason for the working cash is we had transferred, the board authorized transfer of a total by resolution, you'd authorize a total of 1.4 million out of the working cash into two separate funds, then you re-authorize that and transfer back. Reality was, we only needed 1.3 million, so we didn't use the full 1.4 that the board authorized. But I was holding a placeholder still on one side of the equation, so this is to correct for that. So really, it's a 900,000 out of the ed and a 400,000 out of the AMRAF back into working cash. It was totaled only 1.3, it was all we actually transferred out of that line. It wasn't the full 1.4. So I was holding that, and I admit, I just missed that correction in the August review. So that's why it looks like I'm transferring less. But the reality is, that's all we ever actually transferred. The 4,000 that's in the education fund, that reflects a few additional supplies that were needed, second grade and fourth grade at GES, and then some textbooks at the high school in the science area. So just to provide the proper amount of supplies that were needed for those different areas reflect this relatively minor increase. If you look at the revenue, the box on the far right, and the expense on the far right, the numbers increase a little bit. The net difference still is offset by that. The reason why you might notice it's a larger increase, we had an increase in some grants that we're eligible for. So anytime the revenues from the grants go up, that exact expense goes up as well. So the net difference is still is zero. But we actually need to seek authorization to spend the full amount of those grant dollars, which is why we have an increase in overall expenses and overall revenues. But they offset each other by the same amount. So there's not a net difference between those two. So the September budget sees an increase in revenues and an increase in the same amount for expenses, so there's a net difference. But that was due to some grants that we received, some revisions from the state. We got more revenue, so we have more expenses that we need to incur in those areas. So the ed fund is the only change. So to see what that looks like in a picture, if you look at the September one, that's either first link. Thank you. This is a little more familiar, the one-page shot of what your, the different lines look like. This is now the increased revenue, showing the total revenues and the operating funds of 40,000, 121,000. That's up from 40,124,000. So we had a little bit more revenue in those grants. They're offset by an equal expense on the other side. So our operating, our surplus in this case went down just a little bit, but the difference is at $4,000 that we talked about earlier. So we're still projecting a surplus. Any questions? Any public questions?
I have a question here. And that is, the budget that was posted for 30 days was the August version, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I was double-checked the wording on this resolution. And so I think the, since it was the August version that was posted for 30 days, that's the budget that we need to vote on. But your September budget is very helpful, because it just gives us more current information. But since that wasn't posted for 30 days, we cannot vote on the September version.
We actually got legal opinion on that, too.
Yeah, actually, what it is, you have to post, by law, you have to post a draft budget that's available to the public, that gives them a general idea of what type of amounts and expenses and revenues the district is looking at and approving the budget. And we have a hearing, which we're at now.
Okay.
That's allowed for anybody to provide public comment.
Correct.
Board would be able to consider that public comment. They'd be able to give us direction into the overall budget that they're ultimately then going to be approved. And you can approve a budget that is different from your August one that's posted for 30 days.
Okay.
You would need approval, because as you saw, we have increased revenues, which have increased expenses in the grants. And if we approve one that's less, then we're going to be in a situation where we may have to authorize the district to spend the full amount in those lines, and we'd be back to a revised budget just to do the same thing.
Okay, well, the legal attorney provided...
Input from the RLE.
Through the RLE and through...
You looked at it, okay.
Through the RLE and through ISB. They confirm.
Just to make sure.
Oh, perfect.
It's just a draft. It's meant to be substantially the same, but they understand there are certainly going to be differences.
Okay.
And that's the point of the public hearing, is to be able to seek input. Plus, 30 days have gone by, and we've received new information from the state. So we actually have more accurate information to present to you that we didn't have back then.
Perfect, thank you.
But we put them both up there, so that everybody can see the differences.
Perfect, thank you.
Between what was originally presented and tonight's. Yep.
So my hope is, unless there's any other comments, is that you will ultimately approve the September one that's been presented to you tonight. Other comments or questions?
Anything else? Okay. No one from the audience? Not, then we'll declare the budget meeting as, our budget hearing is closed. And we'll move on to approval of the FY '14 budget. And there is a... Betsy, can you pull up the resolution, please? And I will read this resolution, just to... It's not as long as some of them are, so I'll read this one. So the resolution is, whereas the Board of Education of Ball-Chatham Community Unit, School District Number Five, County of Sangamon, State of Illinois, caused to be prepared in tentative form a budget, and the Secretary of this Board has made the same conveniently available to public inspection for at least 30 days prior to the final action thereon. And whereas a public hearing was held as to such budget on the 30th day of September 2013, and that will therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of said district as follows. Section 1, that the fiscal year of this school district be the same, be, and the same hearing is fixed and declared to be the beginning, to be beginning, July 1st, 2013, and ending June 30th, 2014. And section 2, that the following budget containing an estimate of amounts available in each fund separately, and the expenditures of each be, and the same is hereby adopted as the budget of this school district for said fiscal year. Any questions? Need a motion then to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Rick. In a second, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Susan. And call a roll, please.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes. And thank you to Rick and Susan for all of their work with that.
And you, Susan?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Patrick. Moving on to communications tonight, some good news reports. Carrie, you got some...
Jill, do you want something? Thank you. Excuse me. We're proud of our continued efforts in our schools for PBIS. Hold on one minute. We have, you know, all of our schools have made great strides in PBIS over the past several years. And every year, they continue to grow and do great things. So just a little shout-out to them, and congratulating them for their hard work and dedication.
Kind of like frozen, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, you are frozen, aren't you?
Yeah, I am frozen. See what happens when they clean up around you?
Can't do that.
Winkies.
Okay.
Let me see if I can get it.
Well, is that all you want to say?
Yeah.
We can move along while you... If you want to restart, Betsy, until we...
Yeah, we can.
Until we, we can run through the good news.
And then we'll pull it up.
Yeah. Second good news is, and I can take this one, Carrie, if you want, is that Susan Worley has, I guess, graduated, Susan, is that what they call it? From the IASB Leadership, Leadership Academy. And this Thursday, there's a IASB divisional meeting in Rochester that Susan will be awarded a certificate to that effect. And congratulations, Susan. And then 6.3 here, we have Board Member Lisa Weitzel will achieve the Master Board Member Award, and this is a master status maintained. And how many years is this, Lisa?
Just a second.
Just a second. Well, that's pretty good. Adjust. The second year where she's maintained this master status, master board member status. So, and again, that will, she will have the award presented to her at this same meeting on Thursday night. So congratulations, Lisa. Great job. Thank you. And then we'll move on to... Oh, you're up, huh? Okay. 6.4, and this is an opportunity for visitors to address the school board concerning, concerning any agenda topic. Anybody wish to address the board concerning any agenda topic tonight? If not, thank you, we'll move along to our consent agenda. And we have our consent agenda items here, 7-1 through 7-7. I need, are there any questions on any of them, or anybody you want to pull one out for individual consideration? 7-1 through 7-7. If not, then I need a motion to approve those consent agenda items, 7-1 through 7-7.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Could we pull out the minutes of the construction meeting and sort of, there were some... Maybe just have a verbal summary, Steve, or...
Well, we're gonna have...
Be part of your...
It'll be part of the construction, yes.
Perfect.
Yeah. Yep. So, so you don't want to pull that anymore?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Then I need a motion to approve 7-1 through 7.7 as presented tonight.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lisa. In a second, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Steve. And call a roll, please.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes. All right. Personnel consent items. This is 8-1 through 840... I'm sorry, 836 in your board packet tonight. Is there anyone who wishes to pull out any one of those for individual consideration? Well, I would like to pull out 8.23 for individual consideration tonight. So we'll pull that out. Anybody else?
Could we just have, I guess, pull out 8.34, just to have an explanation of what a step grant coordinator does in...
We'll pull that out. 8.34 also.
Just an explanation.
8.23 and 8.34. Anything else? If not, need a motion then to approve our personnel consent agenda items tonight, 8-1 through 836. And we've pulled out 834 and 823. I need a motion then to approve that, that consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Susan. In a second, please.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. Call a roll, please.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes. Okay. First, the one pulled out, first one pulled out, employment of GHS weight coaches for 2013 and '14. There was some concern about administrator being one of the weight coaches in here, and I didn't know if there's a... I don't know if Michelle or if Dan, if wanted to talk to that. Okay. I'm gonna step up there. Thank you. I think the question is, first of all, an administrator who is employed by, who's, who has hired himself as a weight coach. And second is about supervision and evaluation and that sort of thing, and who would be doing that, and how that would take place.
Well, the, these positions came about in 1993. When I was hired here in the school district, this was the job I was hired for. I mean, this was, this was part of, this was, I was hired as the dean of students at the time, head football coach. And one of the main criteria as the head football coach was to develop a weight program, which wasn't existent in 1993. I'm now, following that timeframe from the dean of students, I became the assistant principal, and then the athletic director. I've been the head football coach for, this is my 21st year. As the athletic director, I guess I would question why, I would demand that our head football coach be in the weight room, number one, since it's safety issue for those athletes and all athletes to supervise, but also to develop a curriculum for, for the weight training that we do. I've been doing that job for the last 20 years. This will be the 21st. The reason that I am hiring myself there is I'm the most qualified, since I was the one who developed the program. I was the one, without, I was the one who set the program up. I'm the one who did the research along with others to, that's what we do in the weight I think as the head football coach, I need to be in that weight room. If anyone has any questions, I mean...
Well, I know that there are two other football coaches that are in the weight room also.
Actually, there's one. Coach Johnson. Steve Cox is doing under a, a football coach.
Okay.
Coach Johnson is also the wrestling coach, or, excuse me, track coach. Doug Blakeman is our basketball coach.
Excuse me. I'm not a good sports person, so please forgive me, but if, does that mean that you're in the weight room all the time with the kids? As a weight coach?
No, this is a seasonal thing. It's a, right now, Steve Cox is in through the fall season. I will be in, in the winter season. Coach Blakeman, excuse me, Coach Johnson will be in the winter season, Coach Blakeman will be in the spring, and I am in the summer.
And would you be in there based on the fact that, that's football kids in the summer and basketball kids in the winter? Is that how, how you decide when you're in the weight room?
Not necessarily. I mean, it'll be open to all of our athletes. And we do run programs, and kids do come in and get involved those programs, but then it's open, there's two rooms there, and kids will come in and use those, you know. All kids are welcome. All kids are welcome. Quite honestly, when we go to the winter season, I'll be in there. Coach Johnson will be the person of record, I'll be in there. When we go to the spring season, Coach Blakeman will be in there, I'll be in there. Okay? In the summer, he'll be the person of record in the spring, I'll be the person of record in the summer. Through the holidays, I'm, I'm in there. Through spring break, I'm in there. Summer, I'm in there. For my job, I'm the head football coach here, gotta be in the weight room. And I started that, I started in that position. I didn't make the position. I was hired in the position. I've done it for 20 years. The pay right now, after 20 years, is $2,800. When I started, I think it was under $600. You know, so, old timer like me, I, I've got that stipend up to $3,000. I'd like to keep doing that job. I think I'm the best person to do the job. I think I'm in there more than anybody else. And I've done it for the last 20 years. I continue to do it.
I guess, my question is, if, if you're in there more than anybody else, then why do we need all these other coaches in there if they're not, if it's not an equal, equal sharing of the duties, then how do we...
Well, I choose to be in there. I choose to be in there. They're the ones who are, in the, in the, in the spring, in the wintertime, Coach Johnson is the one who's in charge. I choose to be in there. If I can't be in there on a certain day, then I'm not in there. Okay? I go in there because I, you know, once again, I'm the football coach. I need to be in there. I just, that's just, that's a part of that game. It's a year-round weightlifting program, you know, a lot of different things, nutrition are involved, a lot of different things are involved with that, but, you know, we need, we, in fact, last year, we had seven in there. We, when the, when the budget cuts came about, we dropped it to four. And here's where we are right now. We'll have, we'll have 100 kids in our weight room when we're going through these programs. And like I've said, and also, when, when Coach Johnson is, when, in the summertime, he'll also be in there. Do we both need to be in there? I think so. I think yes. We'll probably have some coaches in there who are not on this list. Okay? Who in the past have been paying, like I said, we're paying seven, and now we're at four.
Well, if we're paying seven before, and, you know, you've got three 20-year veterans in this whole thing, wouldn't it be a good idea to let them have part of that also?
Well, I think...
And split that, and split this up, as opposed to just four of you getting paid for it?
Well, you know, I, you know, something like that. If I went to Coach Johnson and who's, and Coach Cox, who's been doing this for 20 years, and, you know, I mean, they're gonna continue to do the same amount of work.
And they're, they're actually on the teacher's contract also, right? All three of those other individuals?
Yes.
And you are an administrator.
Yes. Job was open, Jim, I took it. Head football.
Well, but no, yeah, but Dan, you hired yourself.
Well, no, 20 years ago, I didn't hire myself.
Well, I understand that, but that's 20 years ago. We're talking about today. We're talking about this year and the next, and continuing from here. Because we've got some teachers out there, I think, that are covered by the contract that, you know, where administrator puts themselves in as, and hires themselves and pays themselves. I still haven't heard anything about supervision and...
Supervision in the weight room?
No. Supervision for these three and the four individuals here.
And evaluating them.
Evaluation and supervision, and making sure that everything is, is what it should be.
Yeah. I think, I hate to tell you this, but I get evaluated every Friday night.
But that's, I understand that, Dan, but that's got nothing to do with this job.
Really?
Well, it doesn't. If you're a weight coach, you're evaluated as a weight coach, not as a football coach. Don't you?
No, I don't agree.
Well...
If I'm a weight coach, and that, and that product that comes out, when you go out on a Friday night, and those kids, and that's the reason we put this together, is so that they, and there's different, there's different types of weight programs for...
Understand.
Kids of different sports. Swing's not gonna live the same as a football player. So, you know, like I said, I think a major part of the success we're having in athletics right now is due to what we're doing in our off season. This is a part of it. You know, I don't think you can just put anybody in there and get the job done. I think it needs to be the, well, people who have been doing it. But honestly, also with the union, I think we have a memorandum of understanding that we've...
That covers the union, doesn't cover administrators.
May I, may I ask another question?
Sure.
Of the superintendent. Did we change policy recent, or change something so that...
Memorandum.
Memorandum for, but for administrators, well, like Mr. Serge, who used to coach tennis, but once he became administrator, wasn't allowed into that any longer?
Right, right, right.
And, and how does that equate with what Mr. Work is, is asking? Is that different?
Well, we had two administrators, Mr. Work and Mr. Hay, who were allowed to continue to coach when they became administrators. But since then, when we've hired administrators, Ms. Gregg, which is that way too, that they were, they've been asked to give up their duties, Rimbush, Steve Rimbush is that way as well, give up their duties as coaches when they came on to coaching, administrative positions.
Is Mr. Work different, because he's the head football coach?
It was before, I don't know when that was agreed to. When he came on, when he and David Hay both took administrative positions, it was before my tenure, so I don't know what the agreement was.
With me, it was 1993. I was living in Plano, Texas at the time, and this job came open. This was all a part of it. I moved my family here, 750 miles, and I took the job. Last year, we were asked to put all of these positions on hold. We did. We helped them all back up. We've got three of the positions. I like to have my job back. That's what I've been doing here for 20 years. That's what I was hired to come here and do. And I think I've done a pretty good job. And I think with, I think the union, as far as I, my understanding is, is that, because I didn't know what MOU, the other was, memorandum of understanding, I thought that that memorandum of understanding was, that the union said, yes, Dan's been doing this for 20 years, and we understand that, and we're okay with that. That was my understanding.
Yeah, no, the memorandum, and you, you had voted on that memorandum, I think, a Yeah, no, the memorandum, and you had voted on that memorandum, I think a month or two ago, Michelle, two months ago. The memorandum, it used to be in the contract, it was in the contract, teacher's contract as the stipends were listed as fall, winter, spring, summer. And the union came to us and said, "We'd like to just have," that they said that they aren't split according to seasons, and they said, "We'd like to just call them 1, 2, 3, and 4." And so that's what the memorandum of understanding was with the union, because they came forward and said, "We don't want to have fall, winter, spring, summer. We just wanna have 1, 2, 3, and 4." So that's how they're listed here. So at that point, nothing was hired yet, and that's actually why it's taken us longer to get to the hiring position, or hiring phase, because we were waiting for the memorandum of understanding to be 1, 2, 3, and 4. Because our first questions were, who does what, you know, and we'd asked Mr. Rourke, you know, how, when, what timeframe do you do that? So is it during your AP duties as well? And he said that, as far as the union, our understanding from the union was that they were really kinda spread out, so they didn't want it to say fall, winter, spring, summer. So it really wasn't, it wasn't about you specifically, it was more about what the positions look like. Because in the contract itself, it used to say fall, winter, spring, summer. And now, they wanted it just to say 1, 2, 3, and 4. Because those duties, as we understand, are somewhat divided according to when people are available.
Right.
That's what my understanding was. So you did approve that memorandum of understanding back a couple months ago, to change that in the contract.
Is Mr. Hay a football coach too?
Mm-hmm.
Dan, how many years out of them, 21, have you been an administrator?
21. Started here as a dean of students. I had a master's degree from Texas A&amp;M, came here, and I had to get my own OIC certificate. So I made, I was a dean of students for the first year, then I got the OIC certificate, so you could say 20.
So he's been considered an administrator for 20 of them, 21 years?
Yes.
And paid a stipend every year for it?
As a coach, yes.
As a weight coach?
I don't know, did the weight coach start it back then?
Yes.
I don't know the history of it.
Has the union expressed a concern about this?
Their concern was, the only concern they've expressed to us is that, just have, not having seasonal, instead of saying 1, 2, 3, and 4, and letting the coaches evenly divide the days.
Have you been notified by teachers that they would like to have that position?
I haven't personally.
Well, we had three others last year that got cut, so, three positions that got cut last year, so, or this year. Is that right, Michelle?
I'm sorry?
We had three other positions in here that were cut.
That were cut, yes.
And I guess these are the four senior positions, I would assume, then?
Yeah, I would say, yeah.
Well, I think longevity here speaks, you know, it's very hard to go against the fact that Mr. Rourke has been an administrator for 20 years, and been a weight coach for 20 years. The time to have changed this was way, way, way back. And I think it's very difficult at this point to say that the rules should have been changed. Going forward, yes.
Well, I think there was some discussion prior to this being presented to the board about potentially some changes. And it was decided to bring this to the board, when there could have been other changes that were made and brought to the board at that time. So, through personnel and through some other things, so.
Hey, Dan?
Yes, sir.
Is there ample opportunity for all sports and all genders to have access to these weight rooms?
Yes.
Who does, who does write evaluations on all of these positions?
I don't think I've ever written an evaluation on any of these.
I think if you look at your, at the sheets that are presented from personnel, that you're required to write three of them, and Jim Lee's required to write the other one.
Okay.
And that's always been that way. So, but there have been no evaluations written on any of these?
No. No, we're all working together in the program. I think, you know, as far as a written evaluation on what each specific coach is doing, it's such a team, it's such a team operation that...
Well, but that's a requirement of the job, Dan.
Okay.
So...
Okay, I'm not close, I guess.
Well, it hasn't been done though in 20 years, obviously. So, okay. Any other questions?
No, but I will say that I think that that weight program has done a lot for our athletes, and you can definitely see the success of programs.
I agree, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. I need a motion then, to approve the claim of the GHS weight coaches for 13, 14?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. In a second, please?
A second.
Steve, thank you. Call roll, please.
Carter?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Pierceus?
No. Okay, thank you. And then next, we have, let's see, which one was it here? Susan, 8.34?
Correct.
Yeah, 8 dot 34. Jen, okay, and this is-
Explain what some background on it? Step grant coordinator for this, and a little special, like 101 for everybody here. It doesn't have to be too detailed, but one of the requirements that we have for students with disabilities is that when they turn 14 and a half, we are required to implement a transition plan. So at that point, we start thinking about their post-secondary life, whether that's going into the workforce, or going on a college, or whatever it is, and then we develop their individual plan based on those goals. Some of the goals are to work out in the community. Because not all of our students, they progress differently and have different aspirations. DHS affords us a step grant, where we receive money based on the number of positive outcomes that we have of students who are working competitively employed out in the community. It's based on how many kids are actually employed. We, in the past, have had 10 as our goal, to have 10 students. This year, we've actually amended it to 13, because we've had such a successful year last year with Patty Schaefer as our step grant coordinator. In the past, that brings us about $40,000, to kinda put that in perspective, that money that we get through that grant. And we're allowed to allocate that how we see fit. Part of how I choose to spend it is to hire a step grant coordinator. In the past, it's been a certified teacher, who maybe taught half a day, and then also had the responsibilities of this grant. And what they do is, not only do they help manage the grant, but they work with our students on job skills, life skills, they teach them how to fill out job applications, and they go out in the community and actually establish those relationships with our businesses, and help our students land those positions. And then they follow through with them, they go, and they check in on them, they evaluate them, they evaluate our students. Some of our students require job coaches, they assist in the hiring of the job coaches to go out and assist our students to be able to work in the community. This salary, Ms. Schaefer used to work for DHS and has retired. When Kim Zerletish retired from our district, she was our vocational coordinator. There was a separate certification that was needed to be able to complete that position. And we developed an MOU with the union to go ahead and pull that position out of the union, because we didn't have any teachers that were certified to be able to do this, and create it as an ESP position. Her salary is covered by that grant, so that's where that money comes from, to be able to pay for that. And like I said, we've increased outcomes every year, and it just has been a positive program for our students. And most of our students not only work while they're in school, because they attend school maybe half a day and then work, some of our students attend school all day and then work after school, but then they continue to be employed once they graduate from Plano High School, which ultimately our goal.
Okay, thanks, Jen. Yeah, any questions other than that? Okay. There are no questions, need a motion then to approve 8.34, the approval of independent contractor agreement, as presented in your board package?
I make that motion.
Thank you, Susan. A second, please?
Oh, second.
Thank you. And, Dan, call roll, please.
Carter?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Pierceus?
Yes. Move on to number nine, old business. First item is our six-day enrollment report. Jill?
Betsy, you wanna open that first six-day enrollment? We did a better breakdown, I think, if you like, of the enrollment for six days. It was a collaborative effort. I didn't hear it alone. Patrick and Carrie and I all worked on this, so I'll just get you reported. Yeah, are we able to open? I don't know if it's on the stuff. So we've given you snapshots of what it looks like. We're up 93 students. All that is trying to be loaded in. So with pre-K, we're at 4,634 students in the district, so we're up 93 students. You've gotta remember that we dropped our pre-K program from five teachers to four, so we went from 120 students to 90 students. So, and then I did a breakdown of K5 and attached that, so you can see the class size. You need to remember that some of the kindergarten students that should be at GES did not get into GES because the cap, because we didn't have any room. And so we have a dozen of them that are either, most of them are at Chevy Elementary and Ball, and those parents know that they have to be transferred back next year when we have the additions. And then the last one is just a snapshot. There's the six-day. That's the first one. And then, sorry, where are we at? Just go ahead and go to the last, the six-day summary, yeah.
Okay.
And we have gone over into K5 by one or two, and the principals have done a nice job of figuring that out. We continue to look at enrollment, I'll be, I mean, we had seven new enrollings last week. So we still have new families come in every week, and then we have some that leave. So this is a snapshot from 2003. Luckily, Patrick actually found this report, and so we were able to quickly put it in. So this is a really nice format. You've gotta remember, though, we add the new building two years ago, GES, to this. So this is a really nice snapshot of our enrollment for the last 10 years. So if you want any changes, let me know on these reports, or we're just gonna continue to go with this next year. Any questions?
This is great. I really appreciate it.
Well, it was a collaborative effort, so I'm not gonna take credit. Okay?
Okay. Thank you, Jill. Our next item is our construction update.
Betsy, can you open that up?
Yes, she can.
Architects and professional managers are gonna break us on the construction update.
Betsy, can you open up that?
Try it.
I'm trying. I'm trying. I've got that on the table.
There it is. There you go.
There you go. It's still a bit difficult to read, I apologize, but all board members, you should have a copy of this at your desk. This was updated as recently as this morning. I moved, you've all seen this in the past, but I did, I moved some of the columns around just a little bit to make it, in my mind, a little easier to understand. The two important columns with all of this is this column, which was really where we were project-budget-wise before we did all this construction. This is all Phase 1 work now, by the way. And the other important column is this other shaded column. If you compare at the bottom, these two numbers, we're about, still about 163,000 to the good side. The other thing that this chart does, now it's got, it's starting to get some information about construction changes across the board. That's all, you know, 15 or 18 of these projects. It also has some of David's input on this FF and E column that we've been talking about. We've, we're starting to fill in the blanks, and we put little tickler comments off to each side, so you can begin to understand what these things are for. Then the last column over here is what we're paid out. On Phase 1, we're paid out roughly 45%. And that's a function of how the pay applications are coming in. With the exception of the three additions, all of the other summer work is all in punchless completion status. That means there's still some items that aren't complete, and the contractors are still working on a few items, but everything's open, the students are using everything, so it gives you an idea where we are. Continuity-wise, we're sitting on, across the board, at still less than 1%, which is still good. We're also carrying, if these numbers total, the contingency column on this side, three of these projects, the additions, are still carrying fairly heavy contingencies in the neighborhood of 10%. We don't know how they're gonna come out, because they're still being constructed. The other projects, you know, the summertime work, I have taken the money that we spent in contingencies and transferred it over, you know, into these columns, so it actually adds up across the board. It's one of the reasons why we moved the, moved some of these items to what we're calling status out here. These two columns are gonna change as the addition projects continue, and as David completes some of his work in the FF and E columns. I'm real happy with the outcome so far. It looks like it's coming together really well, so we're still within budget, which is a good thing, so.
Any questions on?
Any questions on this sheet?
Thank you, this is great.
This is the sheet that we update at our construction committee meetings, and it goes into Board Docs.
It gets updated at least twice a month for the OAC meeting, and then this board meeting. And I think, have all the old ones, the previous ones been downloaded, so that now you can compare?
I think they have, last time I went.
Compare numbers. The numbers are always changing, but we're trying to keep them updated as much as possible.
Thank you. Very helpful.
All right, well, we'll come back to Michael's. Just for the three additions, all of them are not out of the ground, which I'm very happy for. Over at GES, all the steel is complete, with the exception to the screen wall that's on Unit A, that hides the unit that's sitting up there. We got some discussion on that, but we got it figured out and being made right now. So we'll get that in, probably within a week, and we get that installed, finish up the roof, and then all three units will have a roof on them. Today, we've started the air barrier that goes on the exterior wall. And we're hoping, whether permitting, next Monday, we're gonna start ripping it. And with that, we're gonna monitor the flashings over the, on the ground level, as well as above the window openings and door openings.
That, it's a moisture barrier, is that what you, or what, air barrier?
It's an air barrier.
Is that the spray?
It's a spray.
Spray out? Okay. And that does the whole, all of, okay? The outside of the exterior, okay?
So we have two of the wings complete with that right now, and then the second one's gonna be done tomorrow. They'll be fully done with the air barrier by Wednesday night, and then they're gonna start with the flashing. And so we're gonna document those. You guys are more and more likely to see those, and you'll make sure they're correct.
Like we're gonna know, right?
No, no, no. If you wanna come out?
Oh, I understand that.
No, but I'm saying, it's gotta be in the next couple of days.
Oh.
Because it'll be, but I'd like to at least explain to you, when they're sealing all the dissimilar metals and all the joint.
That's a good idea.
It's good to see, yeah. It'd be great to get out there and look at it. Because they're going, I mean, once all the block is up, it's easy to get that down.
Sure.
It's spray applied, once they've done all the prep. And it's going really well.
If you remember the mockups that were done in the past, they're gonna do a mockup for us on the building.
On the building itself, though.
Not freestanding, but right on the building itself.
Right.
Give us an opportunity to look at the flashing.
As far as the front of the building, it's been done for some time. We got some seating and some landscaping done. Had a little bit of rain over the weekend, but hopefully it'll, it's a little bit more. Our light poles for the new drive and parking lot have been delivered. We're waiting on the fixtures. We're gonna try to get them up this week for the Rochester game, but, I hear you, Randy. But I can't promise anything on that. But they're onsite, and we're gonna work on this as well as we can. And then, moving over to the other two schools, like I said, we're finding out of the ground. They're kinda flowing on the same path. We got the steel done, 100% on Ball. And then intermediate's about 90, 95%. There's some moment wells that have to take place on the structure to be structurally sound. We started exterior stud framing on Ball, and we're hoping to start them up this week on GIS, intermediate for the exterior studs. So those are gonna flow parallel with one another. Other than that? Ready to close them up and get a roof on?
Everybody sign at GIS, who wants to sign at GIS, so, okay. It's a great opportunity.
I have imagination. That's awesome. Great stuff, I'm gonna pull it.
Hard work.
It's art class.
Any other questions? About any of the three locations? Okay.
Thank you.
That's all of construction update. Phase 2 construction is next.
We've got tonight, tonight is some informational items that we wanna share with you. Betsy, can you get up the GHS ad?
I'm trying. I may be able to.
That is the top page of these. Other schematics.
And Mike's gonna kinda walk us through this. He's got a couple of different ideas, as we run by the professional committee himself. And Mike wants to take us through each two. Can you go back one slide? Is that possible?
Well, this is just what's loaded. Would you want the power screen again?
Yeah, and then, go ahead and then click through, click through the, there you go. One more, there you go. Okay, we've got two schematic plans to show you this evening. Both involve additions to the high school. That's part of Phase 2 work that we've always been talking about. This first one is kind of an overall site plan of most of the campus area. It's actually an aerial photograph, so it's actually pretty accurate. We've just taken a floor plan and superimposed it on that. What we're showing you here is about a 25,000 square foot addition to the south side of the high school. It would be a one-story addition. Obviously, the, the high school classroom portion of the building is two stories. This would be a one-story version that would look very, very similar to what's there right now. It's one-half of the H portion, which totals about 25,000 square feet. It would include, next slide, Betsy? 14 classrooms and some restroom facilities as well as some flexible space that we're calling either professional development. It could be either four classrooms with the visible walls, movable walls, or meeting space for professional development. As well as the 14 classrooms that are going to net 350 students. The additional four classrooms nets another 100 students, roughly 25 students per classroom. Kind of shows you about how far off the street, you know, it's going to be about 157, 160 feet from the street. And then it kind of leads me into our next schematic, which is schematic B, which is the same 14 classrooms, but instead of the flexible space in this area, we would add a 10,600 square foot district office that would basically replace this building. This building is about 5,000 square feet, which you're outgrowing right now. That leaves you additional space in here for, you know, future. It would include a boardroom. A boardroom that this space right now that we're in is about, I think it's about 950 square feet. We would, this space, next slide, Betsy? Would include a boardroom that's got at least 100. And that's kind of loose seating, so you could probably get more than 100, 100 people in that area. Restroom facilities, enough closed offices for the eight directors, as well as six assistants for the directors. And then some workroom space, storied space, conference space, and the like. Total's about 10,600 square feet. And in, in this scheme, it would include 40 additional parking spaces. We didn't feel the need to add parking spaces on the first schematic A because it's classroom space and there's probably adequate space out in the parking lot to accommodate that. We're working around, this is the existing sign. And if you all remember, that's a, you know, rather large sign. It's an expensive sign, and we're trying not to, not to have to, trying to build around it, trying not to have to move that in this case. Option schematic B, if you remember, we had the outline of this. If you, if you chose to go with not adding a district office at this time, it could be added in the future in option A. That space is still, still there. The cost of both of them, I think the cost of scheme A was 6.890 million, I think, as I recall. And this one, this one is a little over $9 million. We've got some good historical cost information based on, you know, the recent additions that we've done at the other schools. We know that this is going to be more expensive because of the nature of the construction. Both the schools that we did, Ball and GIS, are metal stud buildings, brick veneer, metal stud buildings. This would be a masonry building, very much matching the construction that's going on out, out there right now. I think you have masonry walls around the perimeter, corridor walls are masonry, and the dividing walls between classrooms are metal studs. That's a little bit more expensive construction than the metal stud construction that we did. We recognize that. There's also some additional premiums in this plan. Lockers for the students is one premium. We are talking about a geothermal VRF mechanical system, which adds a couple of dollars per square foot premium to this, as well as the, the masonry construction that we talked about and the lockers. So we're a little bit, a little bit more expensive than the last couple of additions. That's all taken into consideration in this number. It also includes, for discussion purposes, at least right now, a generator that would handle this portion of the building if needed. The generator that handles the, the high school right now is not large enough to accommodate this. It's, it's pretty much set up for life support for the, for the high school the way it stands right now without operating a lot of extra systems. So we recognize the fact that if you had a district office there and you did feel the need to have a generator, you don't have a generator at this building, but if you wanted to have one, you would have to have another one because the current one wouldn't support it.
Can I ask a question? You're saying that just the first floor space is 6.8 million dollars?
Right.
The first floor plus a second floor with a district office?
No, this is all one-story. This will all be a one-story building. The classroom would be a one-story.
Right, but I mean, if you were going to go, are you saying one or the other?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, it's not a second story?
Schematic A or schematic B?
Right, it's all one story. Got it, got it. But, okay, so which, but it's still the, so with the, with schematic A, you get 14 classrooms and 3,500 are flexible space. Schematic B, you get 14 classrooms and a district office. So you're trading, you're losing the flexible space and gaining a district office for 2.2...
2.235.
But that's not, we're not losing the flexible space because we had talked about using that boardroom.
Boardroom as.
As flexible space, as professional development space and that sort of thing. A lot like they use this room on, although that would be probably double the size of this room.
Yes.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't be losing that professional development space necessarily.
So we wouldn't have the option to turn it into four classrooms, but we would have the option for 2.25 million dollars to build a new district office in front of those 14 classrooms.
But we could use the flexible space for four classrooms. In your schematic, it says flexible space or?
Yes.
Or classroom.
In schematic A, I would envision that as, as flexible space with even movable walls, operable partitions, so that you have one large open space for a large meeting or four individual classrooms.
You'd use that, you'd still use the movable walls? Would there be any difficulty with, you know, noise between classrooms?
They're done all the time. You can approach, you can approach the sound transmission class of a partition wall with some of these newer partition walls.
May have a stay.
We've got one at Ball. The Ball addition has a operable partition between two of the smaller classrooms, just for flexible space.
Jill, where are our numbers, you know, as far as, like, how many classrooms did we think, or is this for you, Carrie, you know, where did we think we were going to need, you know, how many classrooms are we going to need at the high school in an addition?
Well, that's what we, she's asking about enrollment projections. And that, that was what we, when we looked at these projections and how long does this take you out as far as adding these classrooms, the question was, at what point does the, the school district, if we continue to grow, at what point do we talk about a second high school?
Right.
And so that's the, you know, where, where that projection is. It's, you know, when you're looking at, so we really looked at, you know, common spaces such as the, you know, auditorium, library, commons area. How big can those, you know, how big can that high school become before you talk about a second high school? That was really what the projections were looking at.
Is there sports issue too?
Right, right.
Mr. Workload, but, you know.
Absolutely.
What's that enrollment number that will max out that high school commons?
Did you use for this?
1800?
1800?
Right.
1800 or 1400 now?
It was 18.
Right. 1850. So 18, we're saying that eight, essentially, we're saying 1850 is maxing out this building for a number of reasons.
For the commons areas.
Actually, the cafeteria commons area is really the driver. You can get, you can get a few more meals out of the kitchen, but the seating space in the commons area is really the driver.
Number of lunch periods.
Even if we got spaced out a thousand classrooms, it's not going to do us no good.
Right.
So we have to, we have to get to that point nowhere.
Your only option at that point is another lunch period, which protracts the school day.
Because we've got three now.
10 to 2, you know, kids eat 10 to 2 then, something like that. 10:30 to 2.
So will 14 classrooms get us to that 18, 1850 number? Is that what?
Your cafeteria is sized right now for, what do you, what do you sit in there? About 500, more or less? I think it's big enough for about 600, maybe just a little bit bigger. So a three period, you got 1800.
But we have to use the.
Yeah, you have to use the outer, the outer front, front.
Right, the walkway.
So what's your, Mr. Lee, what's the optimal number for the?
To have a lunch?
Uh huh. Five?
Less than we have in three.
Seriously. We have, I mean, they're not even, but we have, we have one that's about 560.
It would be fifth hour?
What's that?
Is it the middle one, fifth hour?
Yeah.
Because of, okay, fourth hour is the smallest.
But we, like, we used to sit, when I forget, we set tables on that front, that most southern part of the commons area. It's not ideal when we put 700 kids in the lunch.
Yeah, it's, it's managed it out big time, yeah.
So we were initially open that building, that cafeteria went all the way to the front.
And how many lunch areas was that?
Two.
Two, now you're three.
That's two at the time.
Two.
Now you're three.
Three. So the three at 500 is only 1,500 kids.
Right.
We're right at 1,500.
Right.
So three, three at 600 will, will match out, you know, 1,800 students, more or less. Here we take.
There was also some mention of some students or teachers that had no classrooms?
Correct. There were eight that don't really have a home base.
Right.
They travel.
Would they use up these 14 or would they?
They'd use the first, they'd use the first eight, and you'd have six open. I mean, the good thing about high school is that, I mean, if you have to, the worst-case scenario is put a kid, a teacher on a cart. It's not ideal, but we have that now. This would help, leaving.
But since they're moving around, there's always a classroom somewhere available.
Right, yes. It's just very hard.
It's a scheduling issue when it comes to that.
They need to have a home base with kids, you know.
So I have a question to ask you. Since Jill made the comment that originally the opens area went to the front of the building. And that's how it was originally planned.
Well, I don't know if it was originally planned. I'm just saying that at that time, it was 1,250. You only had two lunch areas, remember? Roma was a lot less.
Okay.
And that's just what, that's just how the master schedule under Mr. Booth was.
I think there was, there's a placard in there that says 625 on, I don't know. It's probably.
625 gets us our 1,800.
Plus you remember that the school was brand new and there's lots of kids, right?
We could.
Well, and one thing that Randy, I think Randy, you said it's tough to, for control and, and Jim, too. It's tough for supervision of 600 kids during a lunch hour with, with the staff that we currently have. I don't know, unless somebody wants to volunteer off the board here to go help them out sometime.
Good sign of you.
Yeah, that's right. I'm sure they'll take the help, but I don't, I'm not sure I'd want to try and help supervise 600 kids.
Well, and the noise level of having 600.
Well, and just getting 600 kids through the line, I would imagine.
And that's one of the pities of it. I mean, our, our kids are great. They handle lunch awesome. You wouldn't think for 500 kids, you take your kid, they do a great job, but getting kids time to eat during the lunch, and that's, if you don't want kids sitting down with seven minutes left.
So if, if we've already got eight teachers on carts and we add 14, eight of them are gone, we're really only expanding six classrooms. Is that a large enough expansion for the growth you're talking about?
Well, it's hard to project because you've got, and you've got kids to sign up for classes, so I mean, 30 in classroom. At a high school, it's different than at an elementary. Right. Possibly four more. Just depends on what classes they have for and how, you know, staffing needs. That's what we like to have. But we have to calculate every year.
I like they're saying that if, you know, we get too big, I mean, if you go to 1,800, you're, you're maxed out then for all your common areas.
You can also.
And, you know, the auditoriums, you know, the, that sort of thing, library and that. So it's, we got bigger problems if we get to 1,800 at this particular building.
Well, let's pay off our $35 million bond issues first.
Well, this is part of our 35 million. This is part of.
No, the second high school.
Oh, well. I guess if you've got, I guess if we have control over that, yeah, I agree. So, but again, this is all part of the budget that, that's for. And I think, I think Dave, you're looking.
We've, we've got two other options to walk through tonight.
Yeah, these are two options.
Betsy, can you go back to the agenda, please? And check out Ball, Chad, District Office Division. Dave, you want to step up?
Big blue screen.
We began talking about this a few months ago, and some of the costs associated with renovating this office space. This was the basic plan that we presented. This is actually what it looks like currently, and there's, there's some changes, I believe, on the next page. I'll let Dave walk you through that. And basically, what we're doing here is giving eight directors a place to sit. What happens is that we give up the conference space, and when we do that, we're going to move our meetings, meetings out of buildings. Why don't you walk us through?
Nothing has changed subsequently from our last meeting, except one of the things we did on the budget, which I guess is part of this, Dave, is some of the work that already occurred, we did the tuck pointing, some of the work, the water remediation, roof work, some, I mean, that's come out of the budget since that's already committed. But it's really all, if you remember our talk, soundproofing, all the, all the, all existing buildings will be soundproofed. We're going to renovate completely the HVAC system. Where we're sitting right here is all of this, I don't know what it is, will be this core of new directors' offices and ADA accessibility at both the front entry and at the restrooms, which we don't have at this point in time. So all of that has really not changed since last time, except for this new, the revised budget for today is talking about, it's taken out what has already been done to the building. And that number, I don't know if that's part of one of the slides you're on, Dave?
I think it is.
Yeah.
I think it's in the next group slide.
Yeah, it might be, but that's, that's at approximately $370,000 is what the renovation will be for, for this building right here.
So the potential exists that if we renovate this space into office, offices, is that if we went with, say, this plan, there's no reason why we couldn't also use this as board meeting space with that?
Exactly. Correct.
Oh, the, yes, that's correct.
Yes. Does that be flexible enough to be used for either classroom purposes or for hall table space?
How much you say, 370?
370 for this.
So we were at 500 and some.
It was four something, I think, before Steve, but that, that again was using the numbers that we already had, hard bids for the tuck pointing and for the roof repairs, which happened. So I, all's I did is pulled those out.
Right, that you're trying to squeeze that down.
Yeah, yeah, just looking at, well, what the actual will be from this day forward. To renovate this will be that number, 370. Correct.
The bottom one?
Excellent, bottom one, okay.
Can you throw out all your negatives? I mean, negatives above that option?
For what?
It's right now 370,000 sounds awesome to me, so I'd have to be really, really convinced that it was a cruddy idea.
Question, Brandon, is the negatives of it?
Yeah, like, we, when we were discussing attaching a bill or an addition to GHS, what funds could be used for what, in terms of maintenance, that sort of thing, those are the sorts of things that I'm going to need to help assess all the options. Those are.
Well, if you're looking at this building and what was the number, 3?
370.
370. And.
Make it meet our, our needs.
To make it, to make it compliant, right?
And to fit our needs.
And to fit our needs.
Yeah, fit the directors in there, make it ADA compliant. But it's not, no thing to remember, it's not adding any parking. It's just doing a little bit of, we're trying to, Dave and I are talking about working with the village on some of our drainage issues and sort of commingling our money and efforts on that.
Right. And then if you look at the value of this building, and I think, Dave, you can talk to that, right? Didn't you talk to?
Yeah, we, we've got a market value estimate on the building, and currently, our building resides between 240, 260,000, depending on if you get a buyer or not.
Sure.
So based on that, it doesn't make sense to.
Put three, over, almost, close to $400,000 into this building.
Well, if we never, yeah, exactly. You're never going to.
Value only matters when you actually have to sell.
Sure, absolutely.
Once you do that, you make it specific to our needs.
Right, and then you're stuck.
But then, yeah, then you're stuck, is that what you said?
So the, kind of going off of what Brandon here is saying, the downside would be that we would not have a current boardroom. We would meet in the schools for our boardrooms. You're soundproofing these offices, and that needs a concern.
Yes. A better HVAC.
The crisis is definitely a negative. I understand that. But are there other negatives in, in going with the remodeling?
Well, you're working around in, in a new option at the school. You get to lay out the space exactly how you want it. Hey, here, we're going to work around the rest of the configuration, then infill this, which we think, I mean, this is obviously a first run, but we think it works for workflow, privacy. run, but we think it works for workflow, privacy, ADA accessibility. But it's still an existing building, so your flexibility is a little bit more limited. When we're smart and we'll do the best we can, it's not the same as a new space.
One of the issues that I've got with, boy, we've laid this space up, there's really no storage space and records, record management. As we grow, you're going to be finding that path, not others. I mean, coming down to my office for records.
Right, which we do regularly.
What, what were the comments? You had made comments though before about what pots of money construction could come from for this building versus the attachments to the GHS. In addition, you were talking about the maintenance costs, like the pain for the staff to maintain this building away from campus versus staff on campus. That all translated into some possible savings and things like that, and then...
Well, actually, that's changed a little bit. Uh, we've added this building to our building inventory with ISB.
Okay.
And in doing so, it allows us to use health, life, safety funding for maintenance items only. It won't bring it up. We can't use the money to bring it up in code, but we can maintain the building. If it goes bad, we can maintain the building with that. That's a change, right, Mike?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
That's true.
Great change. As, as Karen sent an email forward, and they took another look at it a month ago, and, and they, they made a determination. They had change in leadership at ISB and facilities. And then what they're saying now is it's appropriate to use health, life, safety funds for non-student areas.
Okay.
Well, we can't bring enough DDA staff.
Yeah, we won't be able to use health, life, safety funds to bring that building to do the 300, most of the 370,000.
Well, and we can't use, and we can't use the bond money for this.
Not for this building.
Not for this building.
Yes.
You can't use the bond.
Any existing district facility, which this was...
We did say that, didn't we?
Yep.
We didn't list the schools?
Yes.
I thought we listed the schools. What's the resolution say?
We can use loan money for this project.
Okay. I can't remember if we listed the schools or not.
It can be used or it can't be used?
Yes.
It can.
The, one downfall to this plan, too, is that, you know, right now, we're juggling meeting space. So if, if Jill has a meeting of five teachers, and Michelle's trying to enroll new, new hires, and then I have a meeting, it's, there's no, no place for everybody to meet. So, because there's this space, and then there's a little desk, you know, table in my office. But, um, that would be a downfall, is that there's no extra space for meeting rooms. We'd have a small, I think Dave put a small meeting space out front so that he could move everybody back here, but that would be, I would think, pretty small.
Yes.
Ten or so?
Not very good.
So every meeting beyond that, Jill would have to take to, because she has quite a few, and Michelle, too, and Jen, I mean, they all have, you know, quite a few meetings regularly that, um, they'd have to take to a professional about the center or something.
Where do you take those meetings now, in this room?
We shuffle. We really, um, oftentimes are...
We go to the buildings?
We have to go to the buildings, yeah. Right now, we have a couple of spaces.
Stop. We need to do a meeting in, oh my gosh, I love that back door. You can't have any storage.
And right now, we're just trying to use what, what space is available, um, in the, you know, at Chatham Elementary, there are a couple of classrooms that we can use right now, but probably not for very, very much longer. So it's definitely a shuffling. We have to schedule when meetings are in here, and then sometimes they overlap because, you know, someone's goes longer than they thought, or they forgot to schedule it, and so we're shuffling a lot for meeting space. And it's really that ten or so, five to 10, that we have issues with. So it would be helpful to have that out front, but it still doesn't...
Pretty small.
Because then if there's a second meeting, if I'm not involved, then sometimes they'll come in my office anyway, and then I'll just end up getting involved. But, um, they come into my office so that, because there's really only two meeting spaces.
Yeah, they'll look at their own.
Yeah, so I let them use mine, but then I, you know...
Is it practical, feasible to go, to build up?
Billy, Billy's not deciding.
That's good.
I should build it up here.
Up here.
Store here. I mean, it works, and once again, it would kill, we would never recoup our money.
It'd be expensive, and it's not meant to be done, so I would say no.
And we would never recoup our money if we put the 370 into this building, except if we never moved, and then it doesn't matter.
Right.
And is it cost in it? Isn't, is the building next door for sale?
Yeah, but it's a house. It's, you'd have to rezone it.
You have to knock it down and put something else out.
Right.
Hook it up to here or something.
Ask to rezone the property.
It's $125,000.
Is it asking price for them?
Well, it's kind of high.
Well, I mean, a house is good for storage, right? It's just right next door. I mean...
You still have to rezone it.
It's, it's good for a conference room. It's not gray, but, I mean...
Well, yeah. Severely overpriced, though, for the area.
So we wait. See what happens. I mean, you know, we're, we're just throwing out ideas.
Sure, absolutely.
That's all we're doing.
So, anything else on...
Anything else on this?
On this one?
Piece of information. I got my last presentation. Oh, sure.
The bottom one there, Betsy, GMS, yeah. Right? Is that the one you want? Oh.
No.
My mistake.
This one I'm just going to talk to. Recently, we've been approached by WSEC regarding negotiated speed, uh, space comments. We really don't have much to talk about right now. We don't have anything firm. We've probably not sat down face to face, uh, and talked in detail. We have looked at their space, not only this year, but a couple of years ago, we looked at it. Hasn't changed much still. Still good office space. Uh, and we wanted to include that in the information pack because we want to look, take another hard look at that. That's about all I've got to add as far as WSEC at this time.
Any questions on WSEC?
Is that facility behind the, behind the high school, um, is that, can we use bond money for, for that? Or that's...
Well, we have, well, there is...
Not to purchase.
You're right. Not to purchase, we cannot. But, uh, we can use it then, health, life, safety, after we purchase that, uh, after we purchase that property, for any improvements or any repairs, that sort of thing, we can. But we cannot use it for, for purchasing that, that, a building. Um, you know, we talked one time about renting half of it, okay? But if we're renters, it's not our building, and we're not going to put health, life, safety money into, um, into a building that we don't own. So...
Correct. Again, this is all informational.
Sure.
It's not part of the near future. We're going to ask for action. But I wanted to present tonight, so you have time to think about it.
And can we introduce Dr. Gerbel? A little wave. Dr. Gerbel is the director of WSEC. So, um, I didn't know if you wanted to offer anything else, or just...
No, it's just that if you're interested in our building, we're certainly interested in having discussions with appropriate people. It seems to me you've got a, a model of educational campus that you've got, but nobody in the world has. We're on it. We're an educational institution, and it seems to me there's got to be a way that all parts can gain by looking at your other two options, where more expensive than the cheapest, and much less expensive than expensive, but the locations are, you know, many plans.
Location, vision. That's right.
It seems to me, I don't know, we're, it's mutually beneficial.
Dave?
And really free.
What about that last one?
This, uh, this is, uh, Chatham.
Yeah.
Appreciate both educational resources.
No.
The amount of people who choose us and contribute to our station, there's all the things that say we're special.
Oh, that's interesting.
We need educational campuses to be...
It's nice to come and talk like one.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot, Dr. Gerbel. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
About as good as impromptu.
There you go.
That was good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Cory. Thanks, Mike.
Okay. Uh, next, we have 9.4, sale of real estate. And I think we've got some good news on this. I'm not sure who's going to talk about this. Patrick, you want to talk about it? I think you're involved in it. Go.
Uh, we went out for a public notice. At the time, we did not receive any bids and response to that specific request. But we did get contacted and had a, had a bid for the exact amount that was publicly posted. And after confirming with legal, we were able to continue down that path because that was publicly posted, the amount that the district was looking for. So someone is, has come forward and is interested in purchasing it at that amount, and before you, as a contract, seeking your approval to continue down this path. And we have received the earnest money from the other party at this point, which shows their intent and interest in continuing to move forward. So we're looking for your approval to take the bid and continue down the sale of this property.
Everybody's looked at the details. 18,000 an acre.
We'll need at some point, if this does go forward, we'll see at some point its direction from the board of where to put the proceeds.
Right.
Just to remind her, the board may put the proceeds in any fund in any way they want.
Mm-hmm. The other details are there, about when, it was purchased in May of 1993, uh, and the details are there about that. So are there any questions about this?
I say yay!
Absolutely.
I have a couple of comments.
Yeah, go ahead.
From, from day one on the board, this has been thrown around and discussed, and looking back in the history, we've been down this road before. So it seems very appropriate at this time that we come to an agreement with a buyer. Appreciate all the work, Patrick, that you've done, and follow-up expertise by Steve, and it's a good time for all this to happen, let's seems, at its own very good terms.
Steve, very helpful.
Thank you, Steve.
Good job, Patrick.
So if there's no questions, and I need a motion then to accept, or to approve the contract in substantial conformance, accept the contract that's attached to your board package.
Basically, the way, the way of saying if there were some minor changes on either party, you're still given authority.
Yeah, yep. At that, at the price of $18,000 per acre, and there's 43 acres there. So I need a motion to approve that contract?
I'll move.
Thank you, Steve. In a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Brandon. Call and roll, please.
Carter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yep.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weizel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you again, everyone. Yes, well done.
I have several topics, but I can talk quickly, so don't let that turn to laundry lists here.
Go ahead.
Some of these are hot topics. Universal screening has been complete, I think, our principals. We do universal screening three times for reading and math. Reading is grade nine, and math is grade three to nine. We do universal screening three times a year. Students have been identified for interventions and were enrichment. Let's talk about ISAT and PSAE. This is another hot topic. The test has changed again for ISAT. Last year was 20% Common Core. This year, it's 100% Common Core. I've just been notified by the state that there will be no sample test questions because it will lose the fidelity of the test. So that is to share with the principals and the coaches, literacy and university coaches. Um, we also, what's interesting is the PSAE for grade 11 will include the writing component, so that is back. Um, I was at a state meeting, and they clarified that ISB did not put that in there, the legislators did. Um, so I want to make sure that you know those points. Administrator evaluations. I want to commend our principals because I get to evaluate them and have the pleasure of working side by side with them. They did an excellent job of collaborating on their professional goals. They have to set two professional goals and two student growth goals. That's kind of scary. This is the second year that they've had to do that. I do remind them that they need to keep that in mind when we have to go to student growth goals for teachers, and they said they will because there's certain ways you've got to write things. But they did an excellent job. You can tell that we are all on the same island when it comes to looking at goals. It's just fabulous to see. We've grown a lot, and I can't thank them enough for what they've done. So, um, the principals set the goals for the assist, with the assistant principals, and then Jen takes care of the three special ed coordinators. So they've got a lot of work ahead that were required. The principals, myself, and, and Mrs. Barham are also required to do two formal observations and two write-ups. And then the principals, all the administrators have to do a self-reflection, and everything is due by mark one. So we are up and running on this. So, um, and I think it's important to know that, you know, the, the leadership right now, there is a transition. There's, there's a lot more rigor across the board, a lot being more asked of administrators, and everyone's meeting the challenge. Um, let's talk about Common Core. I want to point out, and I'm not going to read the paragraph to you, but Common Core does fundamentally change the instruction and the role of the teacher to more of a facilitator. And something that, you know, you have to keep thinking about, you know, is that we're preparing kids for jobs that aren't even out there yet. They've not been discovered. You got to, you know, you know, we're, I'm old, so I'm just going to say that, you know, I didn't change jobs eight to 10 times, but our kids are going to have to. Um, you know, several of you have not changed jobs eight to 10 times, but we've got a prepared workforce that's going to change eight to 10 times, and for jobs that we don't even know, you know, exist right now. So we got to, we got to keep that in mind when we talk about Common Core standards. Um, I do want to point out that, um, the work would not be accomplished on Common Core if it wasn't for our literacy coaches, or our instructional coaches, and our district university coach. Um, they are the left and right arm of your administrative team, and without them being, working individually with teachers day in and day out, we couldn't pull this off. Because they can't do it alone, and I can't do it alone. So it takes a team, and we've built, built a lot of leadership. They have a lot of leaders that are either ELA, the English Language Arts, or math leaders in each building. So it's phenomenal to see the leadership that is coming to the table to get this done. So, kudos to them. We have the pleasure of working with the coalition that Scott Wiseman, Advanced Illinois, and we've set a date today on the phone of October 29th to, to host a Common Core meeting. Um, and I'll help co-present that along with trying to get some of our coaches involved. So we're still working on that. But really, go ahead.
Who will that be presented to?
Uh, the parents of the community.
Parents and community, and business leaders, and...
And some of us remember meeting with Robin Staines from the executive director at the conference last year, the Luda meeting, you know, so some of us were in that presentation. And since then, I've spoken with Robin through my work and some of their other folks, and so it's, yeah. So you'll be letting us know so we can...
Absolutely.
Yeah, October 29th is...
We are already starting to develop an agenda, and I'm starting to look at materials to see where we'll fit in. Let's talk about PARC. And we talked in academies, I tried to spell all these out for you. Um, the PARC assessment, Betsy, can you click on PARC and then go to that link? Um, we have been, one of 232 districts that have been asked to field test. PARC, the new assessment, this will replace ISAT, um, and PSAE. Um, this is going to be better than ISAT. The states asked for 250 million to support technology. But I want to make a point, when the states ask for 250 million, it's not because to accomplish the test, it's because all of our kids deserve that technology for learning and teaching to occur. So, um, I don't know if we'll ever see that money, but they are going to allow a paper pencil option for the first year of PARC, and they have two different tests that you're going to see that we will be administering. The PBA is a performance-based assessment, which means that it's 75% of your school calendar. So if you look at that, it's approximately March 21st, 4th through April 11th. And that'll be a performance-based assessment, and then the E O Y end of year is that 90% of instruction's completed, and it's May 5th through June 6th. Um, the summative overall will be composed of PBA and the E O Y. It's not the growth between the PBA and E O Y that they're going to measure. It's the summative. So they're going to take those two tests and have a summative overall for kids. Now, I talked to you a year ago... Now, I talked to you a year ago that the PARC is supposed to be four tests. It was supposed to be, and I can't wait to go to my next meeting this week with the PARC person, but there were supposed to be four tests. And two of those were supposed to be diagnostic, much like the MAP test. No one's really talking about the four tests because the state of Illinois is only agreed to pay for two. And I keep saying meetings. I think they're really tired of me saying that. What about those other two?
Because can't they just require us to do it?
Because I just, give me a price. I mean, said in one meeting, just give me a price. I mean, just give me something. So the only unfortunate thing is that the field testing, in my opinion, and I'm just going to share my opinion, is it should have been done a year ago. But we're going to field test a lot of, and well, some districts are refusing the field test. I'm going to tell you why I don't want to refuse. I want a voice. Because if they're going to send people in to help us and watch the field testing, we can say, this isn't going to work. This isn't reasonable. Twenty-day window is not enough. You know, you're going to have to do this, you're going to have to do that. I mean, we've even talked, I talked to Dave briefly before this meeting, we're going to have to have backup generators because there's two ways you can take the test. You can upload the test to our server, but with our power issues, that's a little scary. Or you can take it, you know, live with that link, but you've got to remember, everybody's going to be taking that test. So it's a little scary out there. So the other thing that's a hot topic with this that I want to point out is they really want the high schools to take the PARC and concentrate on taking that PARC and counting that towards something versus the ACT test. So that's in limbo because the state of Illinois may say, I'm not going to pay for the ACT test anymore. So then that's an unfair, you know, I mean, there's people that are saying if they stop funding it, then that denies low income students equal access to testing. So I don't see the state paying for both. For ACT and for PARC.
And colleges accepting ACT, will they accept the PARC?
That's, no, the colleges have not said that they'll accept it yet. So it's still, that's all in limbo. So that, I will tell you, is underscriven. NCLB waiver? Just a brief update on that. We're in waiver purgatory in the state. So because we will not implement student growth completely, fully implemented, you know, we have schools being sanctioned because they're not meeting the goal. So, and there are states that agreed to it and are still not meeting the goals, but they're not sanctioned. An exciting topic is the next one, Rising Star. We have Rising Stars at our six buildings plus the district office. I co-facilitated meetings in all six buildings that were half-day meetings with teams. And I was very impressed with the dialogue. It's very meaningful. You know, typically in the past, and you know, I'm just going to share this because I can, and I did it as a building principal, you really created the 40, 60-page document and you revisited it occasionally, but it sat on a shelf. And Rising Star doesn't let it sit on a shelf because you have to visit it all the time and you have to monitor those plans. And it's based on research. You know, I don't have to go look for the research because the state provides it on Rising Star. You will get a big overview during our school improvement meeting in November because instead of recreating the wheel, we're going to use this to talk about our SIP plans. So I can tell you that there's 155 indicators, 105 or 104 at the building level and 50 at the district level. And we got through five of them. I have been their BO coach and said, you will take your time through this. We're going to, and they have them sectioned into Smart Start and there's different goals. But there's only 11 goals that we're really looking at this school year. We got through half of them. Each building developed one goal and one plan around one, and it was interesting. I never told them which one and they all, six, chose the same. So I was very impressed. So you'll have more about that. They're at different levels with that goal and there's different needs at each of the building, at each of the buildings. So we'll look at it, but you'll get more information. It is really nice because all the reports, there's nine different options for reports. And so you can quarterly get a report or we can do something with our dashboard because that doesn't leave my mind that we need to work on that. So I have some ideas. But we're just getting started with Rising Star. Five Essentials. We're still waiting on what the state's going to decide on Five Essentials survey. You know, we took that. We did meet the threshold of over 50 percent of the students and over 50 percent of the staff. We did not meet the threshold of 30 percent for parent survey feedback. There's been great discussion and concerns over how they've normed it. So we're waiting for talking points and additional information from ISB. I was at a meeting and was kind of shocked when I was told that you're probably only going to have to do it one time every two years. My question was, if it's only a three-year contract, what does that mean? No one can answer it. So, I mean, that's the information I gave. So I will let you know when we get here more information about that. And then the new Illinois School Report Card. This really looks beyond, I got to see a preview of it in a meeting with about 50 other people. And this is interesting, there'll be a new URL. And it's beyond just test scores and the principals can upload information and it'll go live within 24 hours. So hopefully, well, I will be able to share that with you in November, what that looks like at our school improvement meeting. But it was really impressive. I do think, and I talked to Carrie about this when I came back, I'm excited, this very much could be part of our dashboard as well, the information that's in there about our schools. So it's really good information. But there's still some kinks that they're trying to figure out. And one of them, I pointed out, is that if you have the last three years of ISAT, you have three different tests. And some of them are saying that they just want to report it based on the new COT scores. Well, it wasn't that way two years ago. So we told them our opinion as curriculum people in a room, how to not to do that. But we'll see what happens. He took that information back. Do you have questions for me? I just think that you need to be in the know. Along with that report card, they're going to have the old one exist along with the new one, just due to legislation for this first year. But I think you need to be aware of these hot topics. This is why we're here.
Any questions?
I have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Five Essentials.
Uh huh.
I did it.
Right. We won't ever see your results because it wasn't 30 percent.
I know.
Sorry.
Is there any suggestions out there on how to improve the...
The parent participation.
The parent participation. What can we do to, because we want the community...
Feed them. We have to feed people in order to get them to take the survey. I think the timing of the survey is bad. I've said that in a state meeting. I think if you had it during parent-teacher conference and you set up a console where people could take it, I think we hit that. But when you're doing it in February to March, you're not going to get the participation. That or you feed them. I mean, that's been the two options that I've heard across the state. I really do think if you could tie it to parent-teacher conferences somehow, you would get it.
Put a kiosk in there.
Very easily. Very, very easily. Or open up a computer lab.
And out iPads as they walk in or something.
What about making a requirement that they register?
So, I mean, because there's a lot of waiting that goes on at some of our parent-teacher conferences, I think we could very easily get it done. So that'd be one of my suggestions.
What about when they register?
The only thing is, you've really got to get your school year started. But I think also, it's the timing of the results. It's better, I would want the results in November so I could do something about it versus I don't get it until June and, you know, that school year starts. This makes sense with timing, too.
Well, Steve's got a point. What if, like, the online registration process, it was just step 12 or five or whatever?
We don't get a choice, though, in the timeframe.
We don't get a choice on timeframe, yeah.
They administer it when they administer it.
There has been discussion about October.
But Jill's telling them. She's telling them.
So February, March is the time.
But we think, yeah.
I'm all about we have a voice. They might not like it.
Somehow, that doesn't surprise me.
That doesn't mean we can't survey ourselves, it's just...
Can't we just copy it and survey it and substitute the results?
We could, or use our own.
We could, we could create our own. I'm not saying the survey was bad because they had some really good questions, I just don't like how they compare it to Chicago Public Schools that, you know, have done it for 20 years.
And it is all about timing, what you can do with the information.
Right.
Okay. Anything else? Is that okay, Rick?
Yeah.
Nothing else? Okay. And our financials, treasurer and treasurers and financial report, Patrick?
Nothing real different to report here. If you want to look at, I guess, the fund report. And they're all here. If you want to open them up, we're welcome to. I'll leave it up to the board. But here's where your funds ended in August. You'll note the transfers there. As I mentioned, the total of 1.3, just to tie that back to the budget, if you will. Cash is listed, the transfers in our investments, and then totals down at the bottom. Of course, we haven't accessed any line of credit and we'll talk about that in the next agenda item. I don't have anything to point out at this point. I've updated your charts, which are some new charts about, you know, showing last year where we were, just on a graph, and where we're at so far this year. Be happy to answer any questions anyone has about any of them right now. There's really no anomalies or anything for me to draw your attention to. If you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions? Comments? Or I should say, questions or comments?
Patrick, thank you. We've been talking for some time now, a couple of different meetings, and the efforts of you and the others in administration to just roll our sleeves up and work and try and get to the bottom of the house of cards, our finance, so financial records have been built on over the years. I just can't imagine your job to get to that. But it seems like every week, every month, every meeting, there's more progress made. Your effort to comply with our requests, to lay out the reports in a little more user-friendly, layman format have always been welcome. So we really appreciate your work and Carrie's work and Jill and everybody to help get this done because it's a team effort. Thank you.
Our auditors are on site. We are working. We'll be back again next week, I hope. Right now, everything is that we'll have a presentation for you in August, in October. So I'll keep you apprised as I learn more. I expect to have it in October. Did you hear that?
Any other questions or comments? Not, then we'll go on to line of credit, our bid results.
As you may recall, we did need to go out for the rebid of the line of credit due to the fact that they weren't tax exempt obligations due to our selling of bonds. It's really the only reason we're already selling other bonds each year right now because of the referendum. So we couldn't take advantage of those savings. Thankfully, our banks are very receptive and gave us some extremely good rates, I think you'll see here. And we were pleasantly surprised knowing that these were non-tax exempt lines of credit. And they've locked in the rates for both years, both did. INB just offered us two choices. One is a fixed at 2.05 and then one is variable and that changes on a daily basis depending on what the market is. So at the time that I submitted their bid, I contacted them just to get an example of what would that days have been. And that's at the bottom here as an example. They said that would have been 1.68 percent. But again, you're taking the chance that that's going to be flexible, it's going to come and go. You don't know exactly what it would be. So just using those as examples, you can get an idea where the dollars would fall if we were to access the entire line for this coming year and any other fees that were associated with that, what the ultimate cost could be. Again, this is just for example purposes, but it gives you an idea of how the rates apply to that. I'll leave it to the board, but I believe the recommendation would be in this case to actually change who our other line of credit was with and now re-approve it for Bank of Springfield with a low of 1.09 percent, even with the upfront fees one time over the two years and then no other fees during the life of that. We're still saving based on percentage loan.
What about the requirement of the minimum loan of $100,000?
Yeah, because that's not going to be a problem if we're in a situation where...
I couldn't hope, you know?
Yeah, and I can appreciate that. I wondered about that, too. But more, I looked at one of our other transfers, if we're, we would ask for more. If we were in such a situation that it was 90,000 or some number that we really needed, which could possibly be, the reality is, we would go ahead and authorize the more because the chances are the very next month or the next payroll might be the one where we'd need the more anyway. I have no illusions that we won't need to access some part of the line and I would be surprised if we don't access the full amount possibly still at some point. So the fact that they're limiting us to saying you need to at least require that probably isn't going to be a problem. If we are in the situation where we're actually accessing the line, that won't be a problem to reach. Good question.
Thanks, Lisa.
But you're right, it would make us into that.
Maybe someday that would be a problem, but not any...
It would be a nice problem. We're working on that. We are, and you're helping, so we're getting it.
Any other questions or comments on the line of credit? Can you pull up the resolution, Betsy, please? This one I won't read.
It is a little...
So I hope everybody's had the chance to look at it. I mean, there's nothing new in there. It's a lot like the one we had before, but just with the different rates and the different caveats in there, so.
In this case, the Bank of Springfield would be the one recommended unless the board was choosing to go with us.
And it's not tax exempt.
So. Any questions on the resolution? Need a motion to accept the administration's recommendation to go with the lowest bidder at Bank of Springfield for a line of credit for the next year. I'm sorry, two years. And you're resolving, we'll be voting on this resolution also that was up on the screen. So I need a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lisa. Second, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan. And call or roll, please.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
White soul?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes. Let me do one thing here before our board committee report. We did not approve the, my mistake, we need a motion to approve the administration's recommendation on the treasurers and financial reports as presented. I did not ask for that motion, so. Need that motion, please.
I move that.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you. And second, please.
Second.
Rick, thank you. And call or roll, please.
Cobb?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
White soul?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Patrick. 11.3 is our, we have a finance committee, which we referred to this evening in a passport board meeting. So it's a report tonight from our finance committee, which is Susan Worley and Rick Peter Meyer. And it also, Patrick Murphy is on it and Mrs. Murphy's on it, so.
Basically, the August meeting, we mentioned we spent a great deal of time analyzing that number of elementary school numbers. But the second meeting was really more of a brainstorming meeting. Rick and I and Carrie had spoken to the Rochester School District and we learned their methodology on budgeting with their finance committee. And as Rick mentioned at that meeting, that it's driven by conversations between board members at the finance committee level and the administration. We have a very good tool, Skyword, and Patrick and Jen and Jill are familiar with the Skyword, the means by which we can make various scenarios and look at the numbers. So that was something that we talked about and thought would be helpful. We began our meeting by always looking at the most current issue financial statements to see if there was anything that caught our attention, and I did have a question, and Patrick brought in the detail, so, you know, we could look it over. And then also, every, at the last meeting, we sort of got an update on audit timing, so. And then the hard work begins as far as looking, you know, strategizing about the 2014, 2015 budget.
Do you have additions?
I do. First, a thank you to our friends in Rochester. They rolled out the red carpet for us. They sat, Superintendent Bertrand sat down with us, as well as the board, finance committee, and their business manager came in, and were very forthright and did, you know, kind of open up on what they were experiencing, which is quite frankly, very similar to a lot of the challenges that we have here. Our districts are similar, but they are also quite different. And it's interesting to come back and talk to Jen and Jill and Kerry and see what, you know, the SaaS differences were, or what special ed differences were, how their finance committee is structured, how the board directs the finance committee. And even a step further back was that, you know, the board is driven by a strategic financial goal. It's in the strategic plan. So I think that's something that I took away was that it wasn't the board making a decision, it wasn't committee making a decision. It was really driven by a common strategic plan that we probably should think about in that. Susan is one of the most passionate, energetic individuals I've ever served on a committee with. We're getting, I'm getting emails all the time on ideas and things, and I do want to share one thing. There's a lot of stuff that needs to be looked at. There are a lot of areas that we do a great job in, but I think there's always room for One, my observation, and I'd like to bring this back to the committee as a whole, is we've got a lot of ideas out there. When you start to pour through audits, and start to pour through financial statements, and start to pour through past history, you can see in hindsight where maybe we could have done a better job, and we want to learn from that so that we can do a better job in the future. So one thing I'd like to do is bring out all of our ideas to the board's table so the board can help us come up with a priority of what we need to work with and a strategy on how to implement that. I don't want to be a, I refer to Jim as a SEAL team, we're in here trying to find little places. We want to be, have a coordinated effort to achieve our goals of, you know, long-term financial security, long-term balanced budgets, fund balances that are achieved and maintained so that we have a strong district for the future. So it's kind of a nutshell of a little bit of what we're talking about, but...
And they, at one point, is the Rochester, they basically, they financial, of the financial strategic plan as a separate segment with a separate workshop among the board members. And they spent a lot of time talking about ideas and the strategy. And I think that's one thing we need to work on, is that always the board and the committee and administrators need to look at it, not just in the discrete year that the budget is being formed, but within the five-year strategic plan. And they label it a financial strategic plan, so we have, it's a process. They, it's just a process. We have to start and enhance upon it over a year.
One thing I was really neat with, they're working on next year's budget now. So you can start next year's budget from anywhere, anywhere you want to. You can start from what the revenues and expenses are today and adjust that for inflation or what you might expect, but if we're making a decision this year that's going to reoccur next year, and you can start to, any year after that, you can start to put those pieces in place to see where this is going to take us. And we want to take us to the right, to the right place. It's not just our board, it's the next board and the board after that, and we want to make sure that the next board isn't looking backwards at a number of budgets that were upside down. And in one year, Kerry had to do some really, really hard work, and the whole district had to work hard to get where we are. There's still a lot of work to do, but we don't want to get to that spot yet. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you for all the hard work. I know that everybody who's involved in it has been devoting a lot of time to it, and it will help in the years to come so that we can get back to those budget, those budget numbers that we're looking at, those budget surpluses and back. And, you know, this is a great start this year with our, what is it, Patrick, $272,000 surplus for this year, so, I mean, we have to start somewhere, and it's a good place to start is with a surplus, so. All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Let me ask that first. Nothing? Okay. We'll go on to new business, 12.1. This is a reconfigured entrance to Glenwood Middle School.
Due to safety and security concerns, we wrapped, take a look at the GMS entrances. Come up with a plan for modifying entrances to add more security to the entrances. In addition to that, make them ADA compatible. We don't, we're not...
It's really not.
I know it's not. And Dave's here to explain what we're doing. Okay. We'll replace the entry doors and create an airlock entry. I don't have, get your thing there. As you know, when you come up to the main entrance at GMS...
Dave, let me stop for a second, just to get your bearings. It would be the, we would move A entrance, it would be door B.
Yes.
So it's where the kids come in and out after school typically.
So the east entrance, east entrance on the south side.
There's like two parallel, it's one east of that. Lisa, my...
So you'd be moving the main entrance to the east side.
So the main entrance is, right now, is the one that's on the left. Right, be moving into the one on the right.
Yes, correct.
It's the center, kind of the center of the building.
Yeah. And I was, I was surprised.
Everybody good knowing where we are.
Okay, now, go ahead.
Okay. And there's a walk to the, to the door, which, there's just one set of doors there now. So we're going to add a second set of doors to create a secure airlock, and then we're going to replace, I'll go from the outside here, we're going to replace the sidewalk here, add a transgrate because there's a water problem right there now because it slopes from here to here and from here back out. And luckily, we have a couple of nice area drains we can tie into, so it's not a really big deal. We're going to look at putting an additional window in here for a security person who can always monitor this enclosed area, and we're going to do, use security systems so it'll be access to here, and then you have to still be at any other time other than passing time when the doors are open, be buzzed into that, so we always have a secure place to grab somebody at this point. We're also talking about changing right at the corner sign that there's not, well, here's the elevation, we're going to put something that says "main entrance, welcome" because to make sure, just like Lisa said, there's a lot of entrances and sort of, and not being critical, but it's sort of anonymous, make sure everybody knows that that is the main entrance where we want everybody to come. So, and we're going to redo this, there's a ramp out front that doesn't have the tactile truncated domes, as they're called here, so we'll upgrade that while we're doing everything. Yeah.
ADA.
Make it ADX.
Strike plates.
Yep, and we'll have, yeah, pipe plates. That's good. We'll have automatic doors where those can be buttoned.
Because we don't currently.
To come in at those places during the open times. And then again, that'll be securely done, so that'll have to be worked through our security system. We'll talk with technology on exactly how to keep control of that. So that's what that's going to be.
I say if you're back to Jody, please.
Both, pleasure.
This is just a quick line item budget for all those items, new doors, new frames, the transgrate, all the paving, including demolition of the existing sidewalk, signage, seating, and some side repair. And then I have some budget holders that Dave and I will have to hammer out a little bit on, card readers, proxy readers, those kinds of things with tech there. But bottom line, it's about $25,000 to get that done.
Versus 38?
We had talked at one point about it being 38. Was the first presentation that we had.
Exactly. We took another look at it, we scaled back. Well, here's the other thing. I had, what I did for all the concrete work is I used all, from all of, I had Cory take off all the concrete work we had from all of our building bids, and it was about half of what I had estimated.
Okay.
Now, what I did, I didn't take the lowest. I took, I threw it out, and I threw out the high and got the middle. So I got, I got a number of about half of what we were talking about.
So we don't need any contingency money?
Maybe for your...
We could put in 5% or 10%.
Well, I mean, I, you don't have to put it in, but I'd rather know the number upfront.
Sure. If you want, I can redo that, put in a 10%.
Well, no, I'm just saying, if we need it, if you think there might be cost overruns, let's see the better.
I would, because if you're talking about the tech upgrades, I would put in 10%. Yeah, we'll add 10%. Because I think Dave knows his end of it. We haven't talked to the tech people yet.
Okay.
So we can add 10% contingency onto that. So that's going to put it at about 28. You know, we're talking probably a total number of 20 to 30.
Right.
Any questions?
And this just isn't so GMS feels left out because we're not working on this.
For the safety of all...
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Yeah, you're welcome. I think again, tonight, we'd ask for your approval to go forward with this project.
Any questions or comments?
With that, one thing that we would have to consider is the fact that we would need someone, the window that Dave Leonati showed you, that there is an office back there that we would clean up for a hall monitor, and we would need to have someone hired to sit in that position to check people in and out. The idea is that then, as people come into that airlock vestibule, they can show their ID and then get a visitor badge and go on their way, and then be allowed into the building. So that would be an additional cost eventually that, after the construction is complete.
What does Jen and PD think about what another one of their officers say like that wanted at the high school?
We wouldn't probably, that's pretty expensive.
It's county.
Would be their salary?
Oh, district, yeah. We'd do a hall monitor.
Probably be a county guy anyway.
Yeah, yeah, in the county. We do, we have hired back. There'd probably be a hall monitor.
Okay. No questions, no comments. Okay. Thanks, Dave. So, need a motion then to approve this reconfigured entrance at GMS again for, we would add contingency in there, and it'd be no more, somewhere between $28,000 and $30,000 for the total, for the total project.
Dave, you're comfortable doing this when students are present, like they're constructing? We can close off that part of the building easily.
We can make a way to schedule that around. Sure.
Motion to approve this as presented this evening?
Excuse me, one second. So it would, I mean, a minimum is going to be 25, correct? It's not going to be 20?
No.
Okay, so we should really say between 25 and 30 then?
We were saying 28 to 30.
Okay, 28, you just say 28 to 30?
Yes.
Okay.
That would work.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Steve. And a second, please?
No, second.
Linda or Brett? Flip for it. Brandon? We'll do it, Brandon. Okay. Call the roll, please.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes. All right, next item is approval of a multi-use trail easement at GES GHS.
Site plan for GES GHS. What the village has asked us to do is provide an easement 50 feet into our property for a bike multi-purpose trail. That trail would run along the front of the school, all the way to Iron Bridge. They've talked about putting a little turnaround down there because they don't anticipate this trail going any further, and act as a trailhead. And that's something we need to consider. It would be right out here by our signage, it would be just asphalt turnaround for the bikes. The path itself is 10-foot wide asphalt, and they're asking for a 50-foot easement off the, for construction, 50-foot easement off of the roadway. So I talked to the construction committee, and we're bringing it forward tonight for your approval.
That gives us adequate room south of the high school for addition and, over at the high school addition.
Yes.
At the south end, we've got adequate room.
Plenty of room.
Plenty of room. Don't have to worry about the sign.
They, no, no problem with the sign.
Okay.
They've got drawings on there already. There's no issues with construction. And what they've suggested to us is that if we allow this to happen, we've got a couple of areas here where we pull in, they'll make sure that that is asphalted in such a fashion that it'll support heavy traffic.
And there's, that's a drainage ditch along the football field and the parking lot there, right? So that would have to be built up?
Yes.
Okay.
And they, that's... Allow foot traffic.
Sure.
In this fashion, which we currently...
Where right now, they've got it.
Kids walking around on the road.
Yeah, right.
And there's no cost to us? We just approve it?
Just approve.
Just the property.
And it would act like a...
It'd be a sidewalk through there, then, yeah.
A big sidewalk, but it would allow kids to be walking back and forth there.
When you say it's a trailhead, is that, you mean that's a spot where people are going to park and start?
Negative. It would just be a place for them to pull in as they come in this direction to enter this roadway if they wish, or just a turnaround for bikes.
So you won't have any parking issues?
No parking.
And then there's not any liability issues?
Motorized vehicles are not allowed on this.
Are there any liability issues with the fact that once we turn it over as easement, then it's not ours anymore, kind of?
That's a good question. There may be some liability issues there.
Are you talking about for, if there was an accident?
People fall, yeah.
Oh, I don't believe so, but I'll...
Do we have any other black trails on our property anywhere?
We do. We gave permission for them to do before that, in front of GES. There is a portion, about a year or so ago.
Has its their easement, I suspect that liability would fall on them.
Right. And...
Let me smell that double check.
Yeah.
What's that do with our potential for that piece of property down the road?
Which wouldn't be able to use, yeah.
The property here?
Right up next to the road.
Yes, that corner piece that we've kind of been sitting on, waiting for something. We're going to put a bike path there.
Might just be along the south edge of it. 50-foot, 50-foot easement.
50-foot easement, but it's only a 10-foot path.
Yeah.
50-foot easement is a law for construction, mainly it's...
And we probably, how, any idea how far that sign is on the corner? How far that is back off the road?
The sign that resides...
Down, yeah, right there. Yeah.
Oh, it's less than 50-foot.
Yeah.
But...
I mean, I don't know that we'd be building anything that close to, you know, 50-foot road.
But do we have the option that if we do do something on that corner, we can back there, starting point up closer to the track, and we're not going to be tied to having that bike path in that corner, are we, forever? Steve, that's a question I didn't ask, but I will be answering. I mean, we don't know what the potential for that corner is going to be down the road. I don't want to be tied to a bike path or...
Maybe we can ask that question in the liability.
I think we need to take this back to the village and find out what their answer is. I mean, if nothing else, you just shorten their bike path a little bit to the west. There's no rush on a decision here, but I want to bring forward, and good question.
Good question. So we'll find that out, and this information, and we'll come back next month for, how's that? Okay? Once we get those answers, so.
One last question.
Yeah.
Where does the 50-foot start from? Is that the center of the road, or, it starts from the edge of the road?
And the 10 feet, is that like a 40 to 50 part, or is that the after 50 feet?
I don't know. Dave, can we get better drawings for next time?
That's part of that, too.
We've had better drawings.
We have. Can we get better drawings for, Dave? Can we get better drawings for next time so that they can see exactly where...
October 7th, is where that drawing will be.
Terrific. Mm-hmm. Exactly, absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Dave.
12-3, 12-4.
First readings here.
12-5. We're all first readings. I thank Mrs. Thistle and Mrs. Barham for joining the policy team along with Susan and Jim Sutton for Lisa. We picked some interesting times as a committee to meet, and we meet on Friday at 4 o'clock. But that's what works to be on schedule. So the first, the first set of policies is all Title I policies. There's a lot of cleaning up language or legislative on all of these, 12-3, 12-4, and 12-5. And so these are surround Title I policies. And I work with, very closely with the interventionists in our district to make sure that we do Title I correctly. So these are being recommended by the committee. So the next 12-4 are all personnel changes. Michelle went through and worked hard on getting all these policies up to date and making them more understandable, so those are being recommended as well. We did pull three of them and they're not on there, but I, the team did decide that we needed to pull three of them for further research. So we will come back to the policy team in about a couple of weeks with that information. And then 12-5 was quickly, two, one was just, instead of saying building principal, Jen wanted designated school official. And then she worked with a team of people to change our functional behavior analysis forms. So she's recommending that. So these are all first readings. Approval next month.
Yep, they'll be in consent next month.
Absolutely. Questions?
Comments? Questions?
Thanks to the policy team.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe. 12-6, yearbook staff, approval for our yearbook staff for out-of-state travel, so.
I had two students scheduled to speak and I saw where this was on the agenda, I told them, I'll take care of it. The journalism class, yearbook class, excuse me, students are requesting to take a trip to the Journalism Education Association Conference in Boston. It's also the National Scholastic Press Association. It's a self-funded trip. They've gone before and they, it's been very useful and they've brought back some very good things that they use within the classroom. And they're simply requesting to make that trip again. So November 14th and 15th, Ms. Kaler would go with them as a chaperone. There are five that are requesting to go. Again, they're footing most of it themselves. Yearbook is paying, I think, their registration fee and they take care of the rest of it, their meals and so on. But as they're traveling out of state, quite a distance, they would like your blessing and approval to do so.
Any questions?
I think it's a great opportunity. And they deserve it. Yearbook is a lot of hard work.
Especially the two young ladies that head this up, they're phenomenal. Their yearbook wins awards every year. It's been several consecutive years and they just do a wonderful job.
Okay. No other questions? Need a motion to approve this recommendation administration, the Board of Education approved this self-funded out-of-state trip, out-of-state travel request for the G H S staff members as presented this evening. Motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Susan. A second, please? Anybody?
I'm sorry, can I?
Thank you, Brandon.
I am getting thumbless.
And, call the roll, please.
Worley. Yes. Carter. Yes. Cop.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Whitehall.
Yes.
Deuces.
Yes. All right. On the communications, roundtable, do we have any, any items for roundtable this evening?
Well, I know that I'm going, there'll be the dinner meeting this coming Thursday night. And if you, I'm not too sure when the deadline register, it may have passed, I don't really know. Susan, if you're knowledgeable to attend, I'll bring back whatever they present.
I am attending.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm attending.
Okay.
As I am.
Okay.
Anything else for that?
Well, I'm a little biased, but typically, is Ben presenting? There'll be choices.
Larry Durk, oh no, that's a ward. Ben is.
Is he presenting? He always does a wonderful job of updating us on legislative issues.
It's kind of depressing sometimes, but.
Well, he's often depressing, but he.
But he makes depressing things sound good.
He does. He does a good job at it. He's a parent in our district.
Yes, yes.
Okay. I think you can still get in if you want to go. Then also on third, pardon?
Just let Joe know.
Yeah, just give Joe a call and she'll sign you up, email, a call, whatever. Also, that same evening is an open house at O'Shea Builders out on Constitution Avenue. So that's from 4 to 8. So it's right around the corner from Rick's office. But I plan on going to that and then going to the dinner afterwards. So it's just a little open house that they've got, so. Anybody that wanted to take advantage of that. We all got an invitation, I think, to it, so. Carrie, anything?
That's all.
That's all? Future board meeting dates is, let's see, we've got, next Monday, our facilities and grounds meeting here at 6:30. And then our next regular board meeting is October 28th. And then we have the school improvement plan goal setting for November 4th here in the district office. And for anybody who, we have the I S B conference then at the end of that month, end of November also, so.
Now we find some, I don't know if I have no clue what's set up for it.
Oh, let us know. All right. Check the, there's a good schedule in there. It kind of gives a pretty good synopsis of what, what the different.
It's interactive. You can click and it'll make a schedule for you. You know where to go and then it's, yeah, it works out really well. And if there's any, there any training, if you're able to do, like a parat training or any other mandatory fort training that hasn't occurred, there's different, either you can do it on Friday or there's different sessions throughout the weekend, there's just time requirements for that. Make sure you get.
Yeah, plenty of opportunity.
What night are we, is there going to be a dinner or something?
We just, we don't typically do vendor dinners anymore. We're just going to.
We'll go to dinner probably Saturday night.
Saturday?
Yeah, as a group.
On that, so the first morning, it's Saturday morning, there's a real nice class, if you've never been before, that you can sit in and it gives you the lay of the land.
It does, that's very good.
And here are things, and a hint on the four-credit classes or sessions, they're very popular. So.
Oh, yeah.
I went to open meetings training and had to go an hour beforehand and sit there and wait.